Specifically searching through this code for specific. Like, for example, get node by name was one that I, you probably saw me asking questions about it.
Right.
And so it, so it shows that it shows up in those three in the, in the mininet folder. So that was a really good hint that Seth gave as far as how to get that information. But the one thing that I don't know, and maybe you can help me with this, how are you setting up iperf? Cause I saw in the, let me bring up homework three.
So what you're asking is how are you set up iperf in the start senders and start receivers?
Yeah, exactly. Cause, cause there's this, there's this hint. Oh, wait a second. Actually, the hint is in the.
Yeah, there's like a hint of code that should be in the command line and kind of, I guess, how do you call that from within the code?
So it says, it only says one, and I would have expected two different commands, one for the client and one for the sender. Let's see. Okay, so I have them here. So here's that, that hint. So do you need to run iperf once? Cause it looks like this is just setting up, the dash s is just setting up the server, right? And I'm basing that from. So this is the, this is the man page for iperf.
Okay.
And so I see there's the dash s. So the dash p, here's, it sets the port. And dash s runs in server mode.
And the percent s refers to the custom iperf path, which is defined at the beginning and experiment parameters.
Well, I wasn't sure what all those, cause there's a bunch of percent s's there. I didn't think that was just the, I mean, I think you're right that some of that is that iperf patched folder. But I'm not sure what the rest of it is. Like the, the dash p percent s, I think is you, you are defining the port. Here.
Oh, four, five, zero, zero, one. Yeah.
Well, I think actually the dash p and then the percent s. I, well, actually I guess it would be percent i for integer, but that you would, that this was actually defining the. Oh shit, it's right here. Oh my God, I'm fricking retarded.
Oh, oh, the code, code, this commentary. Yeah, and I think there was a forum post as well that did a pretty good job at spelling out what each, like the percent s, percent d, percent. Whatever correspond to.
Ah, okay. Okay, so this is saying, so this first percent s is the custom iperf path. This percent s is the receiver IP. So this is saying, dash c is saying the client is that IP address. This is saying. Five thousand one is the port. This here is seconds. What the hell is dot dash t? Time of what? I have no idea.
This is calling a client. So the iperf command that you're running on that node is actually setting up that node to be a client. So this, the second percent s is actually the address that you're, you're going to be connecting to because a client has to talk to a server.
Right.
Dash p would be the port that it's opening under, which is the, that third percent s.
Yep.
So receiver, that, that's the object that you would be calling from get node by name or something like that.
Yep.
Which would be your third host, right?
Yes.
And then the dash t, this is basically like a time delay or something like that, or the. I was trying to remember from the reading. It was, um. I think, yeah, I think the amount of time to spend sending or something like that.
Well, you know, cause I'm looking, I had, this is the man page. Well, well, let me, let me ask this. Where, when you say the reading, where are you talking about?
I, I was looking up iperf online.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, this is, uh, I thought, I thought all the information would be in the man pages, but. Okay, so the. Dash i. So interval. So pause one second between bandwidth reports. Y, C, and Z. Well, I'm not sure what these ones refer to. How about this? Do you know what this greater than sign indicates?
Yeah. So the greater than sign is like, um, uh, I forgot what it's called in Linux, but it's like a pipe or something. So the output of this command that's to the left of the greater than sign. Um, is going to be sent to whatever is on the right hand side.
Oh, I see. So this is.
It's basically specifying where to output a file that's the result of the command. Is that fair to say?
Yeah. So, I mean, Linux is just gonna, so this is, um, it's like, it's running just a regular shell command. So it's just, it's basically just interacting with the operating system on that node. So each of these nodes is like a virtual host. So they each have, um. You know, like an operating system underneath it. So you're calling, um, some type of program on that machine thing that, that is the host. And so that's piping it to wherever you want it to go, which is, in this case, is going to be the output. So anything that would come from that, you could pipe it to a text file. Like if you were to open up a regular console window and just type like ifconfig and then greater than sign and then like t.txt. You wouldn't actually see anything on the screen because it would actually be sent to a new file that would be created, which would be t.txt.
Well, let's take a look.
I hope this works.
No pressure.
Okay, so then Emacs. Okay, so this is, so it's just a redirect.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's directing the output to a different place. Now, I think with one greater than sign, I think that means to truncate a file if it exists. And if you do two greater than signs, I think that means to append if the file exists.
Okay. Yeah, sure enough. Okay, okay. That I did not know. Yeah, so we just put it right on the end there. Okay.
I played with Linux many, many years ago, so very, very rusty, but I remember some of these little things.
Okay. Okay, well, that's where I'm at. I'm actually on the, um, I was working with Cody earlier tonight. Getting her through the verify latency and I'm just about to start with the verify bandwidth. But I wasn't, I wasn't sure if I had to do an, a, an iperf. One on. The receiver and then the other on the server. Or if just running at one time actually defines both receiver and the client, or correction, the server and the client at the same time. And it sounds like it's, it's just one command.
One command. Yes, it would be just one. Somebody's gonna. Echo.
Yeah, could whoever's not talking just move to your mic? Okay, cool.
Oh, that's better. What were we saying?
Uh, what I was saying is that when we were talking the other night, I thought I had to set up both. I, I thought that I had to send a command to the, to one machine to make it a server and then go. Use another command on another machine to make it a client. But I, I, but I think now that it's all inherent in that one statement, that just doing the, the. You have to run it on the server, but you define the client with the dash c.
Right, and the server is defined with the dash s. So if you see in the start receiver method. If you see this start, the. The, the receiver message starts with the dash s. So that basically opens up a listener or builds a server basically on that node. And so you know what the IP address is of that node because it's a node on this network. And so from each of the clients, which would be host A and B, you're start, starting up iperf as a client and connecting to that server. That you just finished connecting, that you just finished creating in that, that other thing.
Okay, so.
That makes sense?
Uh, maybe. So you see my screen, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so the thing that's highlighted here, which I, I think is under verify bandwidth, I guess. Oh, this is for start receiver. No, no. Well, but. But shouldn't the dot s or the dash s be for start sender?
No, because the receiver, that's host C, that's the one that's going to be receiving the, um, the streams from the hosts, from the hosts A and B. So that's technically the server. Because the data is all flowing. Uh, you know, if you remember the picture, it flows from the left to the right. So it flows from A and B at the same time into C. So C is technically the server because it's the one that's receiving the messages.
Okay, let me take a step back. Um, I would have thought the server was serving the messages and the clients were consuming them. How are you, how are you using server, server in that? Cause I, cause I had it exactly opposite.
Yeah, I think of, I think of it as like a, sort of like a web server, right? A web server has a whole bunch of stuff on it, but it doesn't actually do anything. All that it does is basically just sends acknowledgements.
Ah, okay.
And then of course acts on those acknowledgements. But the server is just kind of sitting there waiting to receive information.
And the clients are bombarding it with, give me this, give me this, give me this.
Exactly. So the, the server is doing nothing but serving, oh, there we go. The server is serving the will of the clients, right? So it sits there and it waits for a command.
Okay. Okay, then that makes sense. Okay, well, that's where I'm at. Where are you guys stuck? Bangtesh, did you, uh? Did you figure out that, that problem with the linking? I did actually see in the homework. Where it was talking about, um, not setting up the hosts, but setting up the links had to be done in a certain order. Did that end up being your problem? I think that's Bangtesh. Oh no, that's Steve. Okay, so, uh, what's the next problem?
So when I was trying to run my code, basically the route I've been taking on this assignment is. Trying to fill in all the to-dos, then test the entire thing all at once. And as I get error messages, debug it step by step. And the portion that I'm struggling now was that I got an error message. I'll type it into the chat. It might automatically get my mic, let's see.
We want to share your screen so we don't have the disappearing. The infinite screen. Okay. So I relinquished mine.
How do I do it? I'm clicking the screen share button, but nothing's happening.
Oh, let me make sure that I'm not. There we go. You should be able to do it now. I hadn't, I had not yet relinquished it.
Ah, okay. Do I have to like turn off chat and then push screen share?
No, you should be able to just press it. And so you'll press it and then another box will come up. To say if you want to share a certain window or share the desktop.
It's weird. I'm clicking it and nothing's happening. The green TV with the arrow, right?
Yep.
Not sure. Ah, that's weird. I'll keep trying, but basically the error that I was getting was that what I typed into the chat, either S, S zero or S one, depending on what I used in my code. It said that that device could not be found. And I'm still in the process of installing the new mininet virtual machine that, um, the instructor or the TA told us to install last night. But I would, I'm not sure if this is related to me using the dated mininet VM. Or if anybody had any idea what could cause my, the machine not to recognize this device.
Was that happening after like a long pause?
Uh, yes, it was actually.
So I had a similar issue with that. And that was actually, for me at least, it was, um. Uh, I was screwing up the output files when I was creating this, when I was starting up the senders. And so I was actually, originally I was pointing all of the, the 400 or whatever senders to one output file. And that just wouldn't let anything be created. Um, so what ended up happening is that it basically kicked out of that loop. And then there was nothing actually created. And that was the strange error that was being thrown.
Okay, so basically what I have right now is. I have host A and host B each going to two separate apple files. But you're saying if it's more than one thing, then that'll cause issues if I'm using the same file name, same file name?
Yes, that's what I had problems with.
So did you write a loop and then just create different file names?
Um, yes. So in the, um, in the loop that is actually, uh, creating the iperfs in the start senders. That last argument is the output file.
Right.
The last argument is the output file. So what I did was that I just added a, uh, like the file name for that became, um, let me see if I remember this. It was like a.
Can you, can you share? Can you, is it possible to share your screen, sir?
Oh, um. I can try.
Yeah, let's see if this works.
Oh, and when he's done, I can share my screen. I finally found my pop-up window that prompts me what to share.
Was it hidden under something else or?
Yeah, it was hidden. Once I viewed all my windows open on my Mac, I saw it, but it didn't immediately pop up.
Okay. Yeah, I've had that problem before. Maybe I'll just look better next time.
Sure.
I have to pull up the code.
Yeah, I had the same problem. Uh, it was associated with, uh, in the, in the sender setup. And then, uh, it was, I was selecting the wrong, uh, Bert said you were supposed to put in receiver dot IP. I was selecting the wrong one. So I get the same error.
Do you want me to share my screen while you're trying to get your file up?
Yeah, good.
Okay.
And like work right in the shell, but I don't have anything open. And, uh, so I'm trying to figure out how to use Eclipse properly.
So can you guys. See my screen or no?
Uh, not yet. There we go.
Okay. And you can, can you see it as I scroll up and down or do it? No, okay.
Yeah, it's pretty zoomed in. Uh, there we go. Yep, yep. So it's just in your Xcode window.
Okay. So in my text editor here, I think this might be my problem. So when I start the senders. And this might be that I conceptually don't understand enough of the assignment, but I'm literally for each of the senders. I'm hard coding, uh, the iperf command. And so from talking to you guys, it seems like a loop might be necessary in here. So if someone could explain. Why, and it might just be in the conceptual understanding of the assignment, just so I can get a better grasp of what's going on.
So each time you, each time you run that iperf command, that's actually creating the flow. So when they talk about the flow in the, in the assignment, every time that you call iperf, you're actually creating that flow.
Okay.
So that's why you would need to loop here over how many nodes that you're actually wanting to start. Right? So in the start receiver, you're only calling it once, which is just that, that, you know, cause you're only creating one receiver that's going to be receiving all of these messages. And then in your start senders, you're looping over, uh, you know, end flows times in order to call host A dot. I don't know what reopen is. I just did a command. Um, but it would be like host A dot.
CMD?
Yeah, that CMD and then that whole line there.
Yeah, I'm, I got an error with CMD. Maybe that's because I was hard coding everything, but I saw at the bottom of the code, they used, uh. I feel someone here, yeah. So I wasn't sure if that was another way to access the command line, but I was just trying a bunch of different commands.
What, what error were you getting when you were using the dot command?
Um, the RT link error, I think, or RT net link. That was one of them. And then another, oh, and another error that I was getting was that. It was just freezing. Like it wasn't even saying I couldn't find a device. It would just, it would stop at. Uh, this portion of the code. So I was just printing messages to help myself debug. So it never completed their receiver, uh, function. The last thing I saw was success verification. Then I saw nothing else. My terminal just froze.
Okay. Go back up to the, the senders, the senders function.
Okay.
Or definition, whatever these things are called. And could you scroll to the right?
Yeah, it's like this is hard coded again.
Yeah, but this is act, so this is actually, this would have been okay anyway, um, because you're only calling this once. But in order to get the, uh, like the 200 flows going, you have to call each of these 200 times. So when you do that, that output file name, that, well, let me tell you. So the reason why you were getting that s, uh, could not be found is because when you get into the do sweep loop.
Right.
What happens is that it, it never, it, it, go to the do sweep, that, that sweep thing. And I'll show you where, where, where your codes can actually break.
Ah, okay.
Uh, no, I mean, pull up the actual, yeah, that guy there.
Yeah.
Okay, scroll down, scroll down. Right here, you see where it says if succeeded is not equal to end flows?
Right.
That's actually where you're, you're sort of like a bending in here. Because succeeded is simply the number of connections that have been created. And numflows, endflows is, you know, the inputted, the inputted parameter. Um, but this here is actually double the end flows. So, um, like if you're following the, 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 the execute command that was given in the assignment. That actually calls end flows with 200. But when we get here, that end flows is actually going to be 400. So succeeded, if you look up a couple of lines, it's the count connections. So what that basically means is that it's only gonna, it's only gonna, uh, uh, be okay when you have 400 connections actually made. So all of this is going to be fixed when you put that in the start senders thing. It's, it go, when you put that into a loop.
Okay, got it. That makes sense. And so just one more time. So I understand the reason why it's 400 connections is because 200 from each host, host A and host B?
Right.
Okay. And, but end flows, won't end flows always be 200 if we pass it into the command as 200?
Look up to line 282.
Ah, okay, got it. So it'll be multiplied by number of hosts minus the receiving host. So basically the number of centers times the number of what was specified.
Right, so you're doubling the number. That, this whole thing confused the hell out of me for a long time until I saw that line up there. And then because the assignment, it makes it sound like out of two, if you're having 200 flows, you're supposed to split it, you know, 100 on each. But if that's the case, succeed never equals end flows and you never actually work. So the only way it would work is actually by starting up double the amount of end flow flows.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, no, that, that makes a lot more sense. It's a lot clearer now. And so my next question is, when we go back to starting the senders, are we, for each flow, are we actually creating a separate text file?
Yes.
Okay. So we're gonna have like 400 different text files after running this 200 for each. Okay, got it.
They all get saved to the test folder and, um, I don't think they're actually used for anything. But they're there.
Okay.
Okay, so let me see if I understand. So the loop that you're talking about, this is actually in, in start senders is where this loop is gonna be?
Right.
And it's looping through, uh, just A and B, uh, as different senders to C or different clients for C?
Right.
Okay, so.
Clients for C. Yeah, so what's happening is that each time that it hit, so you're looping over this. So if you see his code here where it says host A reopen, host B reopen.
Yep.
All of that, both of those lines are going to be within a loop. And that loop is going to execute 200 times.
Okay.
So for each, you know, for, for every one to 200, you're going to call host A dot open and then you're gonna, you know, which calls the iperf command. That creates one flow or one connection to the server. And then immediately it's going to drop down to host B open and then it's going to call that another iperf command, create another one. So every one time around the loop, you're actually creating two separate connections.
Okay.
One from each of the hosts. And that gives you your round robin effect from host A to host B.
Now, and what you're suggesting is that, uh, that if you were to run this without the reopen, I, I'm not sure exactly what that is. Uh, you were saying that you actually did it with the host A dot command, uh, open parentheses, apostrophe, um, iperf. And then filled in all of the variables after that?
No, not even iperf. It's, it's just literally that whole, that, that string that's, that's right in the middle of the screen. That first percent s, right?
Uh huh.
That relates to the, that, that custom iperf path, which actually includes the, the.
That has the executable. Okay, okay, got it. Oh, send it again.
And the only thing here that we're looping through that's going to change, like the only variable would be the file name, right? The rest should stay the same. It's going to be the same receiver, same command, same number of seconds. Okay.
And the easy way to do that, if you scroll over to the right.
Yep.
Uh, like right before the dot and TXT.
Yep.
Just put percent I? Uh, no, to the left of the, the dot.
Okay.
And then just outside of the, the parentheses, so if, I'm sorry, just outside the quote, so right before the closed parentheses?
Yep.
You're just gonna put uh, percent and then um, whatever your, the variable is that's gonna, whatever that int variable, that'll be looping.
Okay, got it.
So what that's gonna do is it's gonna replace in this string the val, you know, the percent I with whatever number J is up to at the time.
Uh, you know, John Stroud actually uh, has something on the um, uh, on the group chat.
Ah, I see it.
Yeah.
Oh, what did I type? Oh, yeah, there we go.
Oh.
I typed it a while ago.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Alright, yeah.
If you wanna get fancy with it, let me show you this. I can't stand when, when file names aren't sorted properly. So if you look in the chat, this is actually what I call. So N is my uh, my integer that, that I'm looping over. Um, the percent zero five D, what that means is that it's a decimal with a, with a, a minimum of five
Character.
Number requirements. So that gives me file names of out file A zero 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 one, zero 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 two.
Right. Yeah, so, so that it actually sorts it in the correct fashion instead of 1, 10, 11, 12, yeah.
Yeah, that's kinda anal, I know, but that's, that's kinda what I do.
So Steve said something interesting there that I don't fully understand. Um, you know, uh, and Steve, I had muted your uh, microphone earlier, because that was the one that was um, feeding back, giving that echo. So I think I've taken that away. You may
I think I have.
Wanna try that again. Oh, I can hear it now.
Can you all hear me now?
Yep. Yeah, if, you may wanna try, if you have headbutts or anything like that, we all hear a very strong echo for the rest of us. That's why I muted you.
Okay, I'll, I'll go get, I'll go get a sec.
So what, so it sounds like he's saying redirect it to null. Is that to not create those files?
That'll send the output to nothing.
And if we're not using the output for anything at all, it's kind of like a clever hack to work around the assignment, I guess?
I guess so.
Yeah. Actually, I'm kinda surprised my computer isn't causing an echo, because I'm not using headphones either.
Sometimes mics will have uh, like noise cancellation on or something.
Okay, Steve, we were trying to figure out, uh, we, we think that your redirect to null is just to get around the whole problem of renaming the file with every iteration. Is that correct?
Perfect.
Okay, how about you, Steve? Uh, any problems you're working through? Uh, try unmuting yourself, I think. Uh, there we go.
Are you hearing anything?
Perfect.
And no echo.
Oh, you can hear me now.
Yeah, we can hear you and the echo's gone away.
Alright, fantastic. Um, yeah, my biggest problem that I've been working through is I just couldn't get instance that would work under the 64 bit, 64 bit system. And I tried a whole bunch of different computers and everything, but this latest VM that they seem to have come out with yesterday, uh, seems to have solved my problem. So. And uh, so I haven't yet been able to uh, test the number of flows uh, at a high number. I can do it at like 20 and 30. Fine. I was running under the 32 bit version. So I'm just, just on the precipice of uh, trying, trying the big, so I'm a little bit behind you guys.
Okay.
I had the same problem with the, the, the other VMs, but as soon as that, that new one works really well, I, I think they finally fixed the issue. You know, what I found was, what, after three or four days of just non-stop searching, I found that there was actually a BIOS setting that you have to enable in order to make 64 bit virtual machine work. And it, it baffled me because at first, I, I, it would work, uh, like I would have a 64 bit VM running on my machine. And I mean, my computer's 64 bit, the operating is 64 bit. So I didn't, you know, I thought everything was, was fine. But then after we were having problems with the VMs and everything, all of a sudden I couldn't get any 64 bit VM to work. And then after reading through a whole bunch of forums, I found that there was this one BIOS setting that you had to turn on. And by default, mine was, mine was disabled on both my computer and my laptop. So it was some type of um, hardware virtualization in the BIOS itself.
Yeah, I, I ran across the same thing. And uh, it was weird that it was turned off by default, but I went in and turned it on and so now it seems to be working with the latest uh, virtual machine. That's good.
Okay, well, is there anything outstanding? Cheryl, Navina, um, any of the other characters that we have? Elizabeth? Okay. Well, this is what I'm gonna do. Um, I have had significant problems uh, trying to get Google Hangouts started on time. So usually you get an email bomb immediately before it starts. And I think the problem is uh, that there's not a community. So I'm gonna form a community tonight and try setting it up uh, for tomorrow. What is good in the evenings for you guys? What time zones are you in? How about you, Steve?
I'm in uh, central, so this was, this was just great.
Okay, and Joe?
I am Eastern time, so a little bit later than this would be ideal for me.
Okay. And John?
I'm Eastern as well.
Okay. Okay, well, why don't we shoot for maybe 6:00 PM ish tomorrow? Would that, I mean, if you guys can make it, that's great. If not, no biggie. 6:00 PM Central, 7:00 PM Eastern.
Yeah, that would work well.
Okay.
For me, it's a hit or miss every night as to whether or not I get home from work.
Well, it's, it, it, it sounds like uh, we are the ones that need you, not the other way around.
I know about that. I've been fumbling one or two.
So has anyone actually gotten through to the whole sweep on assignment three yet?
You know, it's actually, you know, Navina, um, who's on this call that's, uh, you know, she didn't, she didn't chime in today, but I actually really wanted to talk to her, because she looks like she's on fire in the uh, in the forums.
Hi, William, I'm here.
Hey, Navina.
Yeah, hi. And yes, I did finish the assignment three. And um, I did, I did have a lot of problems there. And one of the most important problem that I kind of faced was um, when you kind of go through all the loops, um, even after setting up the 64 bit VM, I did have a problem where the rates were really low, like um, what Ben and the other Ts were kind of saying was you should actually get somewhere between 60 or 70, but I was kind of getting only up to 38 and 40 or maybe maximum 50, and I could never get across the target. Um, I think it's uh, there in the code where you actually multiply the bandwidth with the start bandwidth fraction, and I could never get past the target. So what I did was I had to bring down the start bandwidth fraction from point nine to, I think, point five to get my experiment completely running.
Could you show us your graphs?
Um, yeah, okay, I could show that to you. Uh, you just get it. So I just shared my graph with uh, with Ben, and he was like, it kind of looks okay, but it could be because of my uh, because of the RAM and the computer uh, other memory processes and CPU and stuff, but um, but he said it, it should be okay. So.
Yeah, I'm actually really glad you joined us. I've been watching, uh, from the very beginning, you were rapid firing questions out there. In fact, I was watching you and John Stroud go back and forth.
Uh huh, okay. I was just watching what, what, what is happening there, so I just thought I looked there.
Yeah.
Okay, so um.
Hey, why is she setting that up? Did that, did everyone or did anyone make the change to set sweep that was talked about in the uh, uh, on uh, Yaza?
What was that?
Yeah, I think I missed that one.
Um, can you see my graph?
Yes.
Yes, and so um, what uh, Ben, uh, what Ben and Josh was kind of saying was like, if you get this 400 and 600 below this line, the blue line, it would be much better, but I tried a lot. I spent hours and hours on it and I don't wanna change anymore.
Yeah.
So I thought I kind of gave it up.
Now, after you actually got the loops running, what was the, what was the hardest part? Um, it, it was just maybe the, the firm, or correction, the VM image? Version?
The version was the initial problem, but once the version was over, I mean, the problem was fixed up with the new uh, VM. The other problem that I faced was to get this bandwidth up, that I could always get these points really low and I could never even get a complete loop in the finisher at the right time. So uh, it was like I, I was looping back and forth and I had to um, stop the process many time in between and then start over again. And um, so till I figured out that I have to reduce the bandwidth fraction. You can see at the top of the code where you set the start bandwidth fraction to point nine, I had to reduce that. I saw in one of the posts on PISA that the troubleshooting was to reduce either your target or your target utilization or the bandwidth fraction. So I went for the bandwidth fraction and I was able to proceed.
Yeah, I'm looking through my code, trying to figure out where you're.
It's at the top.
Oh, I see.
Part where you declare it. Yeah, it's given as point nine. I brought it down to point five. I could, it didn't run at point seven or point eight for me. I'm not sure if it was because of my system, but uh, you could try it point nine and if you, if it keeps looping round and round in the, there are two while loops in the do sweep. The second while loop is for your binary search, where the first while loop uh, does the uh, the calibration for the, for the max and the min, and it was keeping on looping there. I was never getting into the second loop, second while loop. So I had to um, decrease the target.
I'm sorry, where, where are these, where are the two while loops?
Uh, it's inside the do sweep function.
Do sweep function, hang on. Okay, looking. Here, I'm gonna bring up my screen so that you can talk to the code. Or, or can you bring up the code on yours for the, for that, so we're actually seeing what you're talking about?
Yeah, sure, okay. Okay, can you see it?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so um, oh, sorry. Okay, there you go. Okay, so here, this is the first, this is the, this is where the do sweep function starts, here.
Okay.
Okay, and, okay, this is all the flows, but John explained all that. Um, we come down here, here. This is the while loop where the, that the calibration of all the rates that you get from the interface and all is calculated. And this is where you actually set the target. So your reference rate, which is at zero right now, it should, um, so this is zero. So as long as your uh, bandwidth into the bandwidth fraction, as long as it's not greater than the target, it will not go into the second loop.
Got it.
Yeah, I was keeping on looping and I had to reduce this uh, I mean, the bandwidth fraction so that this would uh, stop looping and it would go into this uh, to the next while loop.
Uh, and that would, in that last print, is that you're uh, trying to troubleshoot that?
Yeah, those are my troubleshoot. I just kind of give so many prints so that I could uh, know where my code was going and keep it on running. And yeah, so that, that's all my print statements that I use to debug.
Now, when you debug these, have you just been using print statements or have you used that PDB at all?
No, I actually don't know how to use it, but Ben did say it's very easy. But I'm, I didn't try it out, but I found this more easy for me, so I just gave him print statements.
Okay. Well, I do hope, but, go ahead.
Yeah, about, about the RT net link error which Joe was describing about, um, I did see on a PISA link. I did. Hello?
Yes, you're here.
Yeah, okay. I did see on the PISA link that um, someone had posted about about this thing. Uh, it was initially, I think, uh, one, one is to zero.
Oh, yeah, that was Cheryl, uh, Cheryl Miller.
Cheryl Miller or something. Yeah, so she, so she kind of put it out that if you change it to parent group class ID five to one, it should solve this issue and it did solve for me. So maybe you could put this.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
So yeah, so if you put this, this part, just change this to root and five to one, I think it should work. I don't know the exact reason what's happening here, but it did, it did work for me.
Okay. Okay, well, I think I have some coding to do tonight. Uh, I'm gonna see if I can get caught up to at least getting those flow started. I have not yet uh, started my massive uh, looping yet. Uh, but I hope to get to the, tonight. Um, so I guess tomorrow around 6:00 PM Central, 7:00 Eastern?
Yeah, that's um, that's great.
Okay. Navina, thank you so much for coming. Uh, I kinda feel like I'm talking to an internet rock star.
No, yes, it's my pleasure to be here, actually. I could learn a lot too.
Okay. Well, you guys take care. Have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, you too.
Okay.
Hey, are you done? Or should I cut you in a minute?
Hang on.